Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Treb Prater is the pastor at Vine Community Church. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greenwell if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Good morning. Allow me to open us in prayer. Eternal God, I come this morning thanking you for each elected official that occupies a seat on this council and for the other officials and staff that make up our city government. God, according to Romans 13, we know that there is no authority except from you and those that exist have been instituted by you. I pray today that the members of this council will continually understand and embrace that truth. Lord, grant them a deep and acute awareness that the deliberations in their heart and on record are always and ever before you. Therefore, may they seek to carry out this responsibility, this sacred trust with integrity and urgency and equity. Grant them wisdom that they need to handle the affairs of our city in a way that promotes the peace and prosperity for all our citizens. And lastly, give them the grace and peace that comes only from you. I offer this prayer in the name of Jesus, the Son of God, our Savior and Redeemer. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for National Wear Red Day is soon upon us, and it's not hard to look across the audience and figure out who's here to represent that day. Ladies, come on forward. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas heart disease and stroke kill one in three women in the U.S., yet 80% of the cardiac events may be prevented. Whereas cardiovascular diseases and stroke kill one woman every 80 seconds in the U.S. and an estimated 44 million women in the U.S. are affected by cardiovascular diseases. 90% of women have one or more risk factors for developing heart disease, yet only one in five American women believe that heart disease is her greatest health threat. Whereas, women comprise only 24% of participants in all heart-related studies. Only 36% of African-American women and 34% of Hispanic women know that heart disease is their greatest health risk compared with 65% of Caucasian women. Whereas, women involved with the American Heart Association's Go Red for Women movement live healthier lives and nearly 90% have made at least one healthy behavior change. Whereas, Go Red for Women encourages women to take charge of their health and schedule a well-womened visit to learn about health status and risk for diseases. Whereas, Go Red for Women is asking all Americans to go red by wearing red and speaking red. Get your numbers. Ask your doctor to check your blood pressure, cholesterol, and glucose. Own your lifestyle. Stop smoking, lose weight, exercise, and eat healthy. Raise your voice. Advocate for more women-related research and education. Educate your family. Make healthy food choices for you and your family. Teach your kids the importance of staying active. And donate. Show your support with a donation of time or money. Now, therefore, Meg Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim Friday, February 5th, as National Wear Red Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation and acknowledgement of how we're addressing this problem. Feel free to introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Patrick Colindress, sorry.
Jody Osborne with the American Heart Association.
Lisa Hart with Integro's Heart Hospital.
Shelley Jordan with Go Red for Women.
Priya Russell with American Heart Association.
Dr. Morale Krishna, Board of Health as well as Integro's Health.
Thank you, Dr. Krishna, for coming down. What should we know about the Go Red for Women?
Well, there's so much you need to know about Go Red for Women Day. I just wanted to take a minute. My case, my name is Patrick Colindress, and I am a registered dietitian. I work for the state of Oklahoma and with Family Nutrition. And I am so honored to be able to receive this proclamation from you and all the councilmen and women today for National Go Red Day for February 5th, 2016. It's such an honor to have the support of our city. As we kind of went through that proclamation, it had a lot to do with our risk factors. As was stated, heart disease is the number-one risk for all women for the related death. So if you think about it, every second, one woman will die because of a heart disease. And while this is truly sad, the encouraging part is that 80% of these deaths could be prevented through simple lifestyle modifications. So not only talking about how we need to eat more fruits and vegetables, but actually eating more fruits and vegetables or taking that time to walk for 15 minutes outside. Simple lifestyle changes like that really go a long way to reducing a woman's risk for heart disease. And those that get involved with the American Heart Association actually make those lifestyle modifications. As we stated in the proclamation, that 90% of women who get involved with Go Red or Wear Red for Women do at least one lifestyle change, if not multiple, and reduce the risk by 90%. So it's important for all women to understand their risk factors, get involved, and support with people, everyone here today in our great city, to have that, know what our risk factors are to encourage change. And that's why it's so important for February 5th to be Go Red for Women. So thank you so much for allowing us to come here and wear red.
Very appreciative. And I suppose it's very simple, but I think everyone should know their cholesterol levels, shouldn't they, Doug?
Absolutely. The cholesterol level is important. Triglycerides is important. And the blood work is very important for staff periodically. And the lifestyle changes, like she mentioned, are the most important thing that we can do ourselves to improve our heart health and our longevity.
So watch what you eat, be more active, get an annual checkup.
Reduce the stress. Stress response in the body, that's an important part. Heart is an extension of the brain. If you have an angry episode right now for some reason, for the next two hours, your chance of having a heart attack goes up by 230%. And that's how we respond, the body responds determines how the heart responds.
Thank you. And, you know, we have a long way to go on health in general in this community, but it starts with wellness, and we all want to leave healthy, more active lives. So thank you all for what you're doing. And it's February 5th. Wear red in support of women's health. Thank you all for what you're doing. Let's show our appreciation. All right, we're on item four of the council agenda. Item four is the journal. For A is to receive the journal for January 19th. For B is to approve the journal for January 12th.
Move the items, Doug.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Then item five is request for uncontested continuances.
None this morning.
Anyone from council? We're moving right along. Item six, revocable permits. Anyone here from the Red Bud Classic? Come on forward. Patty?
Hello.
Yeah, we'll need your name and address for the record.
I'm Patty Anthony, 1708 Bedford Drive.
All right. And tell us about the Red Bud Classic this year.
Yeah, we're excited. This is the 34th year for the Red Bud Classic. It's going to be held April 9th and 10th. On Saturday, we have the cycling tours, 10:33 and 50. And then on Sunday, we have timed runs, 5 and 10K, and a two-mile walk. Anyway, we're very appreciative of the city cooperating with the Red Bud, closing streets for us for a small period of time. The proceeds from this year's event goes to the Peppers Ranch Foster Care Community.
How many participants do you expect this year?
We usually get up to 5,000 cyclists and runners.
That's great. How can people sign up?
You can go to www redbud.org and register online. It's open.
Patty, thank you and your board for all they do. This event's been going on for a long, long time. We really appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much.
All right. How about a motion to move this one forward? Have a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we'll recess the council meeting. Convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority where there are two items. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA. Convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. All right, we have five items here.
Mayor Doug Cooper's here to talk to us this morning about items C and D.
Okay.
Good morning, Your Honor. City Council Doug Cooper, Director of Parks and Recreation. The Golf Commission in reviewing the quality of play and the activities at our public golf courses had a long conversation and discussion about how to maximize the quality of the new clubhouse at Lincoln. Clubhouse is providing a better experience for our golfers, getting more play out there. They have decided that it is time to do in what we would commonly call dynamic pricing, putting a different price tag on a higher-quality product. And that's what we feel that the Lincoln clubhouse is providing for the Lincoln golf courses at this time. They are recommending that a $2 fee on most of the activities, increase of $2 on most of the activities except for seniors, going up only $1 on senior play at Lincoln Golf Course. No change to juniors or school participants at the golf courses. And again, the tour of the courses, we won't change that price until after February, so the season pass, if you will, will stay the same so that people can capitalize on last year's pricing through next year. But the prices then will go up to $2 even on that pass. We think it's an opportune time to start looking at all the courses as it relates to the quality of the different 18 holes even at other courses. But primarily, at this time, we are focusing on the improvements that have been done at Lincoln and the quality of the experience now at Lincoln. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
All right. Any questions for Doug? All right, Doug, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we have a motion and a second on the PPA.
Mayor, I have a question on the monument at the Centennial Land Run. Just kind of like an update on where we are, how many are left and...
Let's see if Jane Abraham can come in and fill us in on that issue.
Is that something that Parks...
No.
We had one set yesterday, Mr. White, and another one is due in two months, and we're preparing for that one to be brought in as well. But I'm not up on how many more pieces we have left, but we did have a unit set yesterday.
We don't have to hold the meeting up for that. I've just wondered where we are in the present, a long, long journey, and I just wondered where we are.
Jane Abraham's all over that, and we'll get an update for you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Doug. All right, ready to vote on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA. Convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today. All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on the EAT. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And Jane's here to give us an update on the Centennial statues that are going in at the end of the canal.
Okay, I'm Jane Abraham in the city manager's office. We just installed number 37 of the 38 original sculptures in the contract. So that was just installed yesterday, and it's a horse that's falling down right behind the, one of the big wagons. And so it's really a wonderful piece. I was out there yesterday morning, and it's really, the land run's looking beautiful. It's really nice. So the last piece will be done this spring in that section.
You know, we cut it back from, I can't remember how many pieces there were in the...
We did, but then we did award the additional seven, and he is starting to work, he's working on those sculptures as well.
Okay.
So the first one of that group will probably be placed in the fall.
Okay, there, so there's one left of the cutback contract and then seven on the add-on contract.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. It's a great project. It's beautiful. I mean, anybody that hasn't been down there to see it ought to go because it's really nice.
All right, we'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
[inaudible]
All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations?
I was just going to make mention briefly of seven I, which is a Ward Four project.
Q? All right, Meg, go ahead and jump in on I.
Yeah, I just really wanted to recognize Planning Department and Public Works again. Pete, this is the drainage problem over on Southwest 25th Street and Walker, and we're adding new 3,200 linear feet of storm sewer, and hopefully that will finally solve the very difficult drainage problems that some of our folks have had over there. So I appreciate Eric and all of his staff working on this continuously for a number of years.
And Pete, you wanted to discuss Q?
To build a trail at the South Wellness Campus project on Southern Oaks Park, and it's, I appreciate Parks looking into that. That's just not a way to extend that without hitting the budget too hard. If we get that grant, that would make it really nice. But that's just part of that whole project that's planned there as trails and all kinds of things involved in that park improvement, and this is just another step in that direction. I appreciate it, Doug, for moving that forward. But that's all I have.
How long is this trail that we're talking about here?
Until we get it designed and laid in there, we'll probably be talking maybe three-quarters of a mile by the time you get around the property.
Okay. Yeah, it's a great project.
Thank you.
Anything we can do to help that happen, Pete? Let us know.
If I could, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention seven L or ask a question about it. And seven L is the receipt of the Water Utilities Trust Annual Financial Report. I couldn't help but, well, think while I was looking at that, that I just wanted to raise Flint, Michigan and kind of think about where we are and what kind of analysis we're doing of our water system and just make sure.
You know, Flint, Michigan is a situation where they changed water sources and yet had the same treatment plant to treat the new water system. Water is generally either aggressive or it's coating, and it's really hard to get that line where it's right in between. And they also have a situation where they have much older infrastructure in Flint, Michigan, so they have a lot of lead and lead joints, where we have very little of that, not because we're smart, it's just because of the much newer, our infrastructure's so much newer. So we don't have that lead opportunities, and we haven't been changing our source water. I mean, we have, our Hefner plant is designed to treat the Hefner water specifically, and our Draper plant is designed to treat the Draper water. And so we have at least stability in source. And so it's a lot of things that we have that are, that we're able to keep in compliance with a lot of our, with all the standards because of the fact that we're not changing much with it, whereas they had some significant changes. I think one change led to another problem and...
I did read something yesterday that said the cities east of the Mississippi are much more prone to these problems, likely because of the age of the infrastructure and the... But we do do regular testing.
Oh, absolutely.
The EQ does the...
Absolutely. No, we test.
We do it ourselves. Okay, thank you.
One of the things about water that I think we overlook sometimes is that the way our system is operated, maintenance, it looks like to me the Flint problem has a lot to do with the lack of maintenance, long-term maintenance. And one of the things we've done by, since the middle 80s, is include long-term maintenance as part of the cost of bringing water to your, out of your faucet. And a lot of cities haven't done that. Water has been just a commodity that generates funds for the city as opposed to operating it as a separate enterprise. And we're very fortunate, I think, to have had people like Jim Couch and Marcia and several people in between that manage our water system that we're just not likely to have, water quality is something you can't be, have a perfect guarantee about, but we're just not likely to have those problems because of the long-term management that's been involved in that system.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Onto the concurrence docket.
[inaudible]
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any individual comments on the concurrence docket? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine is items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Three at 8802 Southwest 44th Street. It's currently R1, single-family residential, and if approved, it would become R2, medium-low residential. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jim, we have a little bit of possibly a scribbler's error on the write-up here. We're pretty efficient, but I don't think we're this efficient. It says that the Planning Commission approved this on December 10th, 2016.
Probably a mistake, sir.
That doesn't hold us up, does it, Francis? We can move forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is anybody here to sign up for this?
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant present? It was passed unanimously on December 10th, 2015 by the Planning Commission. Since there's no objection, I move for approval.
All right. Anyone want to comment on this item before we vote? All right, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We're on to item 9A2. It's a zoning case in Ward Five at 16301 South Pennsylvania Avenue. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would be a new planned unit development if approved. David?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Francis, is there anyone here?
No.
Okay. Well, there were no protests at the Planning Commission. It's an area of 15 acres that the applicant is requesting to change to a commercial standing, and so I would recommend approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone in the room wanting to comment on item 9A2 before we vote? All right, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward Six at 1700 Northwest 17th Street. It's currently inside of a PUD, and it would become a new simplified planning development if approved. Meg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Francis, is there anyone here? No one signed up to speak about this. This is a similar case. There were no protests. It was unanimously approved at the Planning Commission. Is the applicant here? Steve, do you want to just briefly talk about the project? It's a great one. And while Steve's coming forward, I just want to mention that this is a site that's currently developed. There'll be no changes to the site or to the existing buildings.
Steve Hurst, 3901 Red Deer Crossing. This is an apartment complex in the Plaza District which has currently been utilized as a convalescent home. However, in that current zoning, it has the explicit word for adults. As you guys know, that there's a chronic problem with our foster system and placing kids. They're currently in temporary residences all across the city, and we were approached by the state if we'd be interested in allowing that particular complex to act as a home for kids between 12 and 17 years old. And we have a great operator. They've come and toured the project and are ready to greenlight it. So it's, we've met with the Plaza District retailers and homeowners association, and to their credit, they've just totally embraced it, and we're just excited to move forward.
Steve, thank you. It's a great project for the neighborhood and a great project for the city. So thanks very much.
All right, ready to vote the item 9A3? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward Eight at 12311 North May. It's currently C3, community commercial, and it would become a new SPUD if approved. Mark?
Yeah, this is an ordinance on final hearing. It's for a CVS pharmacy. It was approved by the Planning Commission. I think the developer's here somewhere. Yes. And there are a couple of eating establishment amendments that the developer would like to make that are minor in nature. They probably won't even come into play because the pharmacy has a 20-year lease with some renewal options. But it was 8,334, 8,335, 8,336, 8,337, and 8,345 amendments. I visited with city staff about this, and it doesn't appear to be a problem, so I'd move for passage of the ordinance.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone want to speak about 9A4 before we vote? All right, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9B consists of a couple of issues that have come to us from the Traffic Commission. They're both in Ward Six. Meg, you okay with these?
Yes, I am, Mayor. These both relate to Hoffon Elementary School, so I'd move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second on item 9B1. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Then item 9B2 has to do with an area near Northwest 15th Street and Billen.
Yep, this is a similar request made on behalf of the Oklahoma City Public Schools. Move approval.
All right, cast your votes on 9B2. It passes unanimously. Item 9C is an ordinance that's being introduced today. This has to do with impact fees on new development, and Aubrey's here to give us a capsule. Aubrey?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Aubrey Hamontree, Planning Director. I'm going to provide an overview and an introduction to the proposed impact fees. I wanted to also acknowledge the city staff that's here that's been working with us on this ordinance over the past several years. We've got Craig Keith with the Municipal Counselor's Office who helped us draft the ordinance itself. Eric Winger, Public Works Director. Craig Freeman, the Finance Director. Doug Cooper, Parks and Recreation Director. And we have Bob Teener, Development Services Director, and in my staff, Jeff Butler. And I wanted to start with, why are we even considering impact fees as a city? But in short, we're considering them because growth costs money. Oklahoma City has demonstrated such success through its MAPS program. It's a pay-as-we-go program. We understand the benefits that MAPS brings to our community when we do things that way. But we've also demonstrated that our rapid growth as a city and the expansion that we've had have caused us to be reactive. We are chasing development, struggling to keep up with basic infrastructure, not to mention the other important things that make our communities work, parks, schools, libraries. So impact fees are a tool. They're a widely-used tool across the country to share infrastructure costs. They've been around since the 70s, started getting a lot more momentum in the 80s and 90s. They're a tool that cities who grow, cities who are successful, typically use to try to distribute those costs to the community and provide infrastructure and basic services to keep pace with growth. So that pay-as-we-go mentality of our MAPS program, which has been so successful, could be translated to a pay-as-we-grow scenario so that our infrastructure can be built concurrent to new development rather than following it. The state of Oklahoma allows us to use impact fees for many things. This list shows all of the different types of infrastructure that communities can fund through impact fees. Our community only charges water and wastewater impact fees currently, and with this proposal, we would be trying to institute traffic or streets, impact fees, and parks. I'd like to talk a little bit about the benefits of impact fees. Like I mentioned, communities in rapidly-growing regions do struggle to generate enough revenue necessary to accommodate growth. And Oklahoma City's system depends primarily on general obligation bonds to build new roads and parks and infrastructure. But in addition, those bond funds also have to pay for the maintenance and the operation of those systems. So the more we build, the more we have to maintain, and we don't want to keep falling further and further behind due to our own success as a city. But impact fees can provide funds that can be used to target infrastructure improvements where the capacity is needed, where new growth occurs. And we can allow those funds that are captured through impact fees to be put back in and used in our general obligation bond funds to go back into maintenance, which we desperately need to be able to provide to keep our streets in good condition, keep adding sidewalks and bicycle infrastructure, and those other quality-of-life amenities. Impact fees also can improve the predictability of when and where infrastructure investment will occur, whereas if they're funded through bonds, it may take many, many years in order to see the benefits of those improvements. And again, we're chasing growth where it occurs. Impact fees also help treat developers more equally. Our current system requires developers to self-fund traffic impact studies when a proposed development goes in. Those traffic impact studies cost money. It comes out of the pocket of the developer, and in a scenario where you would have an area that has not yet been developed at an intersection, the first corner could be developed by someone who does a traffic impact study that shows at some point that intersection is going to reach a point where it needs to be improved. The second corner can come in and still not trip the trigger of what needs improvement. The third person pays for another traffic impact study, does another development at that third corner, and finally, the fourth corner is developed out. And yes, that fourth corner now trips the trigger, the intersection needs the improvement, and that last person in pays for the entire improvement. That's the system we have right now. It is not an equitable system. So the impact fee helps distribute the cost among everyone in a fair way. We've also looked into this over the years and studied the effects of impact fees. They've been in place in other communities for decades, and we have some great data that we have been studying, the Brookings Institute, the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy. Several universities have studied this, and they conclude that communities with impact fees may become more prosperous in the long run than those without them. Those studies have also reviewed the effects of impact fees among many cities over 10-year spans... spans, and the summaries of those is that they can have an overall positive effect on housing, they can add value for consumers that's capitalized into home prices because now we're providing the benefits and the amenities that people expect in their communities in a timely fashion. They're also not found to raise the price of lower-quality homes and should not have severe effects on issues of affordable housing, according to these studies. They are shown not to slow job growth, rather they have a positive effect on the local employment, and they do not have a discernible adverse economic overall impact. And this is confirmed by our own interviews with cities as we've gone to prepare our analyses of our peer cities. We've had many conversations with them. We've talked recently with Fort Worth, Tucson, Albuquerque, and we've asked them if they saw a dip in building permit activity after impact fees were initiated. Some cities see a very short run-spike-dip phenomenon in their building permit activity, but it quickly corrects. So I want to talk a little bit about how impact fees work. They are just a one-time charge. They're charged to new development, and it can only be used to pay for capacity that is caused by that development's existence in a specific location. These impact fees cannot be used to fund operations, maintenance, or repair of existing infrastructure, or be used to catch up with situations that have already been created by existing development. So they would be used for, they cannot be used for things like street widenings, or they can be used for things like street widenings, they cannot be used for things like street repair, pothole repair, or resurfacing. Our state legislation requires a two-part test to be met for impact fees. First, that the fee has to be reasonably attributable to the new development, and that the fee will be used to benefit the development in some way. Go to the next slide, please. Our process for developing these fees has been going on for over a decade in Oklahoma City. We've started discussions back in 2000 about this issue, and more recently, a proposal for enacting impact fees was developed in 2007 and 2008. We received some opposition about the idea of impact fees and the methodology that was explored back in 2007 and '08, learned some important lessons that we've applied as we've moved forward, and tried to revamp the structure and methodology for impact fees today. Some of the things that we learned through that process were, the methodology was very complicated, had a lot of different pieces, not easily understood, and the areas that we could spread the fee across were too large to make it seem that there was a direct tie or benefit to the development paying the fee. In 2011, the state adopted legislation defining how cities administer fees, and then in 2014, we started exploring ways to better calculate and apply those fees, and started working with specific stakeholder groups and having discussions with representatives from both residential and non-residential sectors, and with their input have developed a proposed draft for consideration today. The basic overview is to institute new development impact fees for parks and trails and streets. The parks and trails impact fee needs are outlined in the 2013 Parks Master Plan, and streets' needs are based on the traffic that's generated by new development and the impacts to the transportation system. These fees will be collected and spent in localized benefit areas, and we have proposed phasing the fees over a two-year period. We've also proposed annual adjustments of the rates to maintain our cost recovery percentage so that we don't immediately fall back behind. The rate adjustments would be based on construction costs that were published in the Engineering News Record, 20-city average cost index. Currently, this is the same method that the city uses for automatic adjustments for fee-in-lue of sidewalk and stormwater detention. I wanted to do an overview of the parks and trails fee. This is based on projections for parks and expansion of the trail system identified in the Parks Master Plan. For the, the Parks Master Plan establishes expected levels of service as our community grows based on population and where it goes and existing types of facilities. So the Parks Master Plan would identify regional parks, local parks, and trails, and opportunities for them to be connected to each other. Residential development is the only type of development that would pay a parks fee. And the calculation for that was based on the Parks Master Plan's anticipated needs. When we sat down and worked with residential developers, they felt that it was fair to negotiate a 25% cost recovery of that total amount. Go to the next slide. And that results in a total fee of 37 cents a square foot. Developers who build their own private parks for subdivisions may get a portion of that credit back for that local park because it meets the needs and is satisfying a level of service for local parks. And also developments that go within areas of the city that are already served by a local park would be exempt from that portion of the fee up to a 14-cent credit. We anticipate that this fee will generate approximately $2 million a year and would be spent within five benefit areas. And the five benefit areas are regionally-based so that those fees can be collected and spent on regional parks, local parks, and trails within those zones.
Aubrey, can I ask a quick question? Does residential include apartment complexes?
Yes.
Okay.
Transportation fees for streets are based on consumption, or the capacity that they, that is demanded by new growth. The rate structure is calculated by two things: where the development is located, so we have four different assessment areas across Oklahoma City, Core, Infill Development, which is the ring around the core, New Growth Area, which is more of the suburban parts of Oklahoma City, and our rural areas. It's also based on what type of development exists, and that is calculated by the traffic that those different types of development generate. The four assessment areas, the portion the fees based on the capacity demands in different areas of our city. So for example, go to the next slide, where the travel demand is increasing in areas where the infrastructure is lacking, the fee is slightly higher because when you model transportation patterns in Oklahoma City, trips are longer further from the core. Conversely, in the core, where infrastructure is mostly complete and trips are shorter, the fees are less. We use trip count data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers to develop categories for the varying rates, shown by these blocks of color for the different categories. They group similar ranges of trips generated by those different uses. So you'll see residential generates fewer trips, industrial, less trips, and then the green bars show the number of trips as trips increase for the different types of development. So an example of what we might consider customer-oriented low would be a department store or dentist office, customer-oriented medium might be a post office or a movie theater, and customer-oriented high would be like a fast food, drive-thru, or convenience store. The traffic demand methodology is the most commonly used, and it is the legally-accepted approach nationwide for streets' impact fees. However, if you're calculating strictly on traffic counts and calculating 100% cost recovery based on those demands, some developments generate an unaffordable rate. The customer-oriented high is a great example. They, they have a lot of trips that are pass-through trips that use the road network to get to those locations, but it's unaffordable to charge the rate that would be generated from that. Most cities don't charge 100% cost recovery for that, and several institute fee caps or maximums that the development can afford. Planning staff did work with several local developers. We created some pro forma analyses for each of the different development types and categories, and tried to determine what the appropriate caps might be for those development types. Sent that back through, negotiated a reduction of a third of a rate of the original proposal, and that's how we landed with the rates and the caps, as shown in this next slide. So this table breaks it down by the category and by where the development would happen in the city. The rates range from 40 cents a square foot for residential development in the core to $4 a square foot for fast food or high-impact commercial development in the rural or suburban area. These fees are expected to generate about $6.7 million annually. For reference, between 2008 and 2013, the city spent 20 million, 20.4 million dollars on expansions and road widenings. So if comparing the rate recovery of the 6.7 to the 20 that we spend, it would approximate only 33% of full-cost recovery. As I mentioned, fees will be collected and spent within smaller geographic benefit areas to ensure that new facilities are built within a reasonable proximity for the fee payers. This gets back to that legal nexus test. So the colors on this graph represent those four assessment areas, and then the bold lines depict the four, 14 benefit areas. So if your fee is collected in area N1, the fee is spent in area N1. In summary, we believe we've developed a fair approach that will benefit our citizens and will not compromise our competition among peer cities. This table compares development impact fee totals for a 2,000-square-foot home, for example. Edmund, Moore, Mustang, and Norman also charge impact fees. They range from $1,500 to $3,850. Oklahoma City's proposed fee at 2,790 is lower than many comparable cities, but well below the national average. We've, we've also shown the national average excluding California, which has extremely high fees, and that national average is $8,510 for a 2,000-square-foot home. We've also done a comparison of fees for non-residential development. It tells a similar story. Oklahoma City's current rate is at the very bottom of our local and peer city list. It ranges from $49 a square foot to $160 per 1,000 square feet of development. The proposed fees that we're presenting today range from $700 to $1,800 per 1,000 square feet, depending on the type of development, which is still well below that national average of $2,200 to $4,600. So in conclusion, this work is a product of many, many years of conversations, studies, research, and negotiations, and we have negotiated and customized this approach to our situation in Oklahoma City, which I believe is unique. Oklahoma City has such a large land area, such amazing development potential and opportunity, and it's a challenge to provide the high quality of life in our growing city. And we have to find ways to more closely link the revenue and expenditure sides of the equation. And although impact fees may not be a complete solution, they certainly help balance that equation. And our city staff is here to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Remind the council, we have some people that have signed up to speak today, even though the public hearing is still a couple of weeks away on February, is it next week? No, February 9th is two weeks away, and then the final adoption is scheduled for February 16. Any comments from council before we call people up to speak? All right, I'll ask the people that have signed up to speak if they would keep their comments to three minutes or less. First is Jeff Van Hoos.
Good morning, Jeff. Mayor, council members.
We'll need your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Jeff Van Hoos, 11612 Old Mill Road. I was raised in Oklahoma City, and I've been here 53 years. My claim to fame, before we really get started, is that I had the privilege of playing football with the satellite football program that was under the coordination of Mayor Cornet's father, Carol Cornet, and we all loved him dearly. Great man.
Yes, thank you.
I can't begin, also, I was married in Oklahoma City, four kids at Baptist Hospital in Oklahoma City, and my business has been here 36 years. I can't begin to tell you how hard it is to come to this podium and oppose anybody that is on the staff for Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City has been so good to me and my family. I love Oklahoma City. I have built buildings all over the country, and let me tell you, there is no place like home. I have an incredible relationship with David Adcock, and before David Adcock, it was Jack Crockett. I really like working with Jeff Hines, Mike Wilson, Johnny Newmine. I could go on and on. Great relationship. And through this impact fee study, I have also learned how talented and dedicated other staff members like Eric Winger and Aubrey Hamontry, and even though we don't see eye-to-eye on this impact fee, I have great respect for them. They're superstars, and their staff are superstars. In 36 years of being a general contractor in Oklahoma City, this is the first time I've stepped up to this podium, and in my opinion, it's with good reason. I think we are better than this. I think there's a better solution. The traffic impact fee is not equitable, it's not fair, and the fee structure under commercial is certainly not reasonable. It will slow the economy, it will slow job growth, it will cause the surrounding communities to gain from our mistake. The reason MAPS has been so successful is how it's being funded. Everybody has skin in the game. Anytime any organization needs to raise money, it's always a more successful campaign if you collect a little bit from the masses. MAPS has collected a little sliver from everybody that has a pulse in Oklahoma City. Nobody was hurt, and look what MAPS has done for Oklahoma City. The traffic impact fee is the opposite. If passed, we will be collecting millions of dollars from a handful of developers who will have to pass the expense on to the businesses that we're trying to attract. Aren't we supposed to give the new businesses incentives to attract them to Oklahoma City? We need to increase our sales tax. We need to create new jobs. We need to sell more homes. The impact fee actually penalizes the new businesses. That's why I say we are better than this. Everybody needs to pay. We all use the roads, collect a little bit from everybody. When you drive on the Kilpatrick Turnpike, it doesn't discriminate and say, oh, there's Jeff Van Hoos, he's been here 53 years, he goes for free. Oh, there's that new guy, he just moved to town, we're going to charge him eight times what the regular rate is. And that's what the impact fee does. If you listen to the impact fee presentation, you'll probably believe that everybody's doing it. And I heard that when I raised my four teenagers. I used to hear that a lot, but, Mom, but Dad, everybody's doing it. Well, that's not quite true. Everybody's not doing it. Dallas does not have a traffic impact fee, Houston doesn't have a traffic impact fee, Austin doesn't have it. I think, and I don't know the facts, I would like to have more time to learn the facts, it's my opinion that for every one city that's doing a traffic impact fee, there's 10,000 cities that aren't. I called Edmund, they do not have a traffic impact fee. I called Norman, they don't have a traffic impact fee. I called Yukon, Midwest City, Bethany, Mustang, War Acres, Guthrie, none of these cities have a traffic impact fee. I called Moore, and they do have a traffic impact fee. For most businesses, unless you're a 7-Eleven, it's 25 cents a square foot. If you're over 50,000 square feet, you get to do a traffic study. So that is somewhat of a reasonable, 25 cents a square foot is, is not the end of the world. $4 is the end of the world. I'd like to hand out a chart real quick.
Okay. Hey, you're, you've exceeded your time, Jeff, so we need to, need to move on. All right. PB Odom III?
Well, this chart's critical, and I can do it.
Okay, well, if you can sum it up quickly, I'll let you finish.
I can sum it up quickly. This, the chart that you just saw on page 14 of the PowerPoint presentation shows that Oklahoma City is currently well below everybody else. If you study this chart, the bottom chart is numbers I put together. I called Mustang, Norman, Moore, and Edmund in Oklahoma City, and I bid permits out on a 100,000-square-foot job and a 2-inch water meter. Mustang's permit fees are 8 cents a square foot, Norman's are 14 cents a square foot, Moore's are 14 cents a square foot, Edmund's is 20 cents a square foot, Oklahoma City is 28 cents a square foot. That's three times Mustang's, doubles Norman and Moore's. The bottom line is, all the permit fees, Mustang's permit was 9,700, Norman's 32.5, Edmund's was 47,000, Moore's was 39,000, Oklahoma City's was 32,000, but in, later this year, Oklahoma City's will be 34.4 once the 2-inch meter goes up to $5,300. So if you pass this traffic impact fee, Oklahoma City's permit will be $232,000. So put yourself in the shoes of the business trying to come to Oklahoma City. Are you going to come to Oklahoma City, or are you going to go to these surrounding cities that don't have the traffic impact fees?
Jeff, a look at it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Jeff, before you, step, can I just ask a question? You know, you talked about Houston as an example, and I talked to some developers in other cities as well. And Houston may not have a traffic impact fee, but they have gigantic utility hookup fees. So I, I think the concept is out there in almost every city, it's just what we call it, how we apportion it or how we calculate it, I think.
Right. Thank you.
PB Odom III?
Mr. Mayor. PB Odom III, I go by Paul, 2,300 Southwest 89 in Oklahoma City. And members of the council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to chat just a couple minutes. I'm not going to be as long as Jeff. We've been in business over 80 years in Oklahoma City, retail and commercial development, as well as residential development. And I'll say this, by studying this plan, the cities of Yukon, Moore, Norman, Edmund, really, Mustang, they are going to really applaud this plan because it will drive, it will drive business to them. We, we live on sales tax in the city. We need sales tax. We don't want to drive sales tax to our suburbs. We don't want to drive sales tax to our suburbs. In my business of retail, the internet is assaulting us heavily on bricks and mortar. 12% last year increase in internet sales, which we don't get any sales tax. We don't want to implement these fees to burden our city with more, less sales tax than we're already getting. Currently, I've got a project, it's very thin, it's only 2.5% return on investment. Very thin, it's a big project. We put another couple hundred thousand dollars on it, that project goes away. This is reality. Our plan talks about the suburbs and the distances. At Southwest 164th and Santa Fe, I have some property. It's in the very, you know, the very suburbs, very far reaches of Oklahoma City. It's one mile from the Warren Theater. That's just an example of all throughout the city. It's far from the city center, but it's very close to other areas. So the bottom line is, this is not a good deal for our city. It is not. It is a lot of money. Thank you very much.
All right. Paul, thank you. Carl Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carl Williams. I'm president of Associated Builders and Contractors, a construction, a Commercial Construction Association. Our members, members of ABC build everything non-residential. They build your hospitals, your universities, your retail centers, office buildings, warehouse, distribution buildings. The distribution of the fees that have been mentioned on the traffic impact fee segregates one area of the construction industry, and that's the developers. And where the proposed fees on that would include the, not only the new construction, but also that would have an impact on the general contractors, the developers, and possibly discourage new construction due to the higher impact fees. Mr. Van Hoos described the amount of dollars that would be involved in some of it. ABC became aware of the updated proposal for the traffic impact fees only last week. And I would strongly encourage the council to further explore the possibility and include some of the developers and commercial developers and contractors in the future discussions. Like I say, we would encourage a further study of this and would appreciate the involvement. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carl.
Mayor, Councilman Bill Waterman, 3109 Hickory Stick. I simply want to reinforce everything that has just been mentioned with the other three gentlemen. There's far too many questions and issues that have not been resolved or addressed, especially on the commercial side of this proposed ordinance. As you saw in the timeline, these conversations have been going on for years, and for the council to take this ordinance before them and in the next three sessions make a decision is pushing entirely too quickly. I don't believe that the awareness in the commercial community is where it needs to be in order for it to fully been addressed and vetted. There's just far too many questions and issues that I think need to be studied before everybody really understands the effect and the impact that this ordinance is going to have.
All right. Bill.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Doug Tap, I represent the Associated General Contractors of Oklahoma, 605 Northwest 13th. As you have heard from Mr. Van Hoos and my counterpart, Mr. Williams, our members are concerned with the development, the ordinance. We've had numerous meetings on the topic since we were aware of it late last week, and thank you for staff for coming into our office and talking to us about it. Same concerns. Our members are voicing concerns to me about a worry that the higher commercial impact fees would slow down our economic growth in Oklahoma City, maybe potentially delay or even stop projects, which not only affects our commercial general contractors, but also our subcontractor members. All we are doing today is asking the council to consider giving it a 60- or 90-day delay, bring our builders in, bring ABC's members in, some of more of the development community, and let's see if there's a better way, a delayed implementation, or something that we could all get our hands around and propose together. Thank you.
Doug, thanks. All right. Anyone here, else here hoping to speak today? All right. Council have any comments? Again, the public hearing is February 9th, but item being introduced today.
A couple of initial thoughts. One is that, I mean, we've heard a lot about comparisons and peer cities. I do think that that's a little bit of apples and oranges, because there's no, I can't find another city who's trying to provide infrastructure to 620 square miles. I found one, that's Jacksonville, Florida, but they have swamp land throughout that can't be developed. So the demands on Oklahoma City to try and provide just unencumbered development through 620 square miles without really a comprehensive plan for many, many years, and without, without a plan of how this development has cost the taxpayers dearly. And I just, I think that that needs to be in consideration in the comparisons. I'm going to stop there, but I defer, I agree with Meg that certainly it is much more com- I mean, the idea that one city, for every city that does it, 10,000 don't, I think is, is not going to be borne out. And I agree with Meg's.
All right. Any other comments from council? Larry?
Honored. As I listened to the presentation and as I went over the information that was presented to me before this meeting, is the comparison that we're doing here valid? As I sit here today, I don't know. I need more information myself. Maybe you know, and that's fine, but I don't know whether that comparison is valid. Couple of the gentlemen said that some further study might be needed and some involvement. I, you know, I question where we all been, because this has been going around since 2007, 2008. But that being said, you all think that some additional time is needed. My comment goes back to how much time would be needed. And as I listened to it, I heard one gentleman say 60 to 90 days delay would be good from his standpoint. I'd like to have the council think about a delay of this for 60 to 90 days. Thank you, Honored.
All right. Any other comments yet, David?
Yes. I think Larry makes some good points. This needs to be addressed, and I think it's inevitable that we're going to have to have an increase here. But to provide an opportunity for the business community to present alternatives, which to date, I've not seen any alternatives provided by them. So I think to be helpful to members of the council, we need specific alternatives, but I think you need to prepare those alternatives with the understanding that increases are going to occur. It's just a matter of how much and over what time period would those increases occur. I think just in discussions with other members of the council, we certainly recognize a need for increases. The business community may not see the need for the level that we're proposing today, and all I'm suggesting is provide alternatives to us, but do so in a manner recognizing that increases will occur. But I agree with Larry. This is a very long-term issue, and to delay this by a few weeks, I don't think it hurts us at all. Thank you.
Mark?
I've heard from more developers, contractors, met with people about this issue than any other issue since I've been on the council. And I think it's really important for us to be supportive of our contractors and our developers, and hear their side of it. And I applaud city staff for all they've done from September of 2014 through the summer of 2015. They've held many meetings, but I don't feel people are informed enough, and I don't feel people have had enough input yet on this subject matter. And so I would join Larry with his views to move for a continuance, and I would propose that we continue not only the public hearing, but also the final hearing, say 60 days. I'd make that motion. And the other thing I'd like to know, Aubrey, is how soon could you meet with representatives of this commercial group to continue this process in discussions?
We're available to meet immediately.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I'd make that motion.
Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment.
Okay.
Do we want a second first?
No, there's been no second.
Okay. I just, it scares me, Pete, when I have institutional memory on this council. But we, we've actually been working on this, not since 2014, but back to 2007. And I thought Aubrey's presentation addressed it well, in that there were some complications with that. It was a difficult structure, it wasn't easy to understand. But this conversation has been ongoing for a very long time. And I am so respectful of the development community, absolutely appreciate everything they do all across our city, but we are faced with the complication of being the third largest city in the country, 622 square miles. We've got to figure out a way to help support the demands on transit. So I'd like to compliment staff. I think taking a little time to continue the discussion and discuss some alternatives is probably valid. We're in a slightly funny economic time, as we were in 2008, so, you know, a little time to think about this is, but I just think staff has done an amazing job this time, and they have reached out to as many constituencies as they can. They can't talk to everybody, and maybe this provides another opportunity to talk to some more folks, so.
I agree with you that staff has really worked hard on this, and I applaud them for their work. And the only thing I was meaning to imply from September, or the fall of 2014 through the summer of 2015, there were any meetings held by staff. And I know the process has been going on longer than that.
I'll second Mark's motion. And again, when I second it, it's not a criticism of what the staff has done. I think they've done an excellent analysis. I'm not saying I'm against their proposal, but I just feel whenever anybody, whether it's members of the council or members from the community feel like they need additional time, especially on an issue that's such a, has long-term impact, for us to say, no, we're not going to provide additional time to allow the community, the business community to provide additional input, I just don't think it's appropriate. So I second Mark's motion. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Francis, have you done any math on the proposed motion? 60 days from February 9th?
Yeah, 60 days will be March 29th. I'm just not clear on if we're deferring the introduction or setting the.
Yeah. My understanding is he wants to defer the public hearing, is what I heard.
Yes, the public hearing.
Yeah.
So you are introducing it today?
Yeah, the item is, I suspect we're still going to be introducing it today, but the motion is to defer the public hearing for 60 days.
Okay.
Right, and move the final hearing.
And that's March 29th.
Okay. So how do we vote on this? Do we vote on this separately?
No, it can be in one motion.
Okay.
Introduce and set the final hearing.
Okay. I just think 60 days is too long. I mean.
I agree.
So, anyway, we'll vote on Mark's motion. So it'll be introduced today, and if it passes, the public hearing would be set for March 29th, is what you're saying? Okay. All right. Everybody ready? Cast your votes. And the motion passes 5-4. So the public hearing will be March 29th, and then the final adoption will be scheduled for?
The week after, which would be April 2nd.
Following Tuesday in April, first Tuesday in April.
Can I make one more comment just to the development community? I would hope that as you're mobilizing and you're preparing for the future, that you recognize that next year will be the general obligation bond, and that's really the one chance we have every decade of making all the infrastructure improvements to our roads. Development community did very, very well in the 2007 bond with all the road widenings at the periphery of the city. But that is, that's where we make our investments for the next decade, and that will happen next year. I'd ask that you to consider what the impact is when you carve off $75 million, as we did for the very first time in 2007, for economic development. That's $75 million less for streets and roads and parks and investments for your development. That's $75 million that went to, 7 million went to Continental, 3 million went to Chesapeake, and on and on and on and on. And we don't have a lot to show for that today. We have a lot less roads, we have a lot less parks, and I ask that you, as a community, start to think about, next time, do we carve off 75 million again? Because that would be, that would be a lot of streets and parks and things for your developments. Thanks.
All right. Yeah, Larry?
In order to be fair and balanced, I think there's one other thing that people ought to keep in mind. Several millions of dollars of that general, limited tax information for economic development went for the Tinker Project, didn't that Jim?
He did.
How many dollars went to the Tinker Project?
20. Why, they helped me. How many, how many dollars went to the Tinker Project?
26.
Six?
26.
27.
26 some odd million dollars. And are not the projections rather significant about the amount of jobs that that's going to create over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years?
No, it's a significant project.
Thank you.
All right. Council ready to move forward? Thanks to everyone for their participation today. Item 9D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under the dilapidated structures All right. Cast your votes on 9D. It passes unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E? All right, how about a motion?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9F? All right, how about a motion on 9F? Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding removal of property from the abandoned building list. We have two items listed here. Anyone today show up to speak on these items? All right, how about a motion on 9G? All right, cast your votes. 9G passes unanimously. Item 9H is the sale of some general obligation bonds. Is this is going to save us some money with the new interest rate?
It is. Craig Freeman's here, or Kenny Soodle's going to summarize this for us.
Okay.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick comments on this. On, a couple of weeks ago, you all approved a resolution that set forth a financing plan and authorized staff to move forward with this transaction. So just today's resolution actually authorizes the bond transaction. We will be refunding the 2007 bonds, approximately $38 million worth of bonds that we will be refunding. We are estimating right now that this would save approximately 3.3 million a year. This resolution before today authorizes the maximum amount of bonds, sets the maximum interest rate, authorizes some of the specific bond documents, and also authorizes the use of the property tax to pay for these bonds. The savings will be realized in the debt service fund, which will allow us to continue to issue the previously authorized geo-bonds and manage our tax rate. And our plan is to do the bond sale on February the 9th, and we will come back with a report to you afterward to let you know how that went. We met with the rating agencies, both Moody's and Standard and Poor's, last week, and we're awaiting those ratings, but the meetings went very well and sounded positive. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Kenny, will we know about the ratings before we go out to market on the 9th?
Yes, we're anticipating knowing those ratings by the end of next week.
All right. We have a motion then on item 9H. All right, it's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this item? All right. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9I concerns our relationship with the American Indian Cultural Center and our impending relationship with the state, and how we're going to work with the Chickasaw to put this whole deal together. And so Wiley's here, and I think Wiley, the important thing here is this is just laying out the groundwork. This is not any sort of final document.
That is correct. As council will recall, in June, there was a committee appointed to study the new legislation, and that committee met on December 20-
and that committee met on December 22nd to evaluate some studies that were presented. And at that meeting, the Chickasaw Nation came forward with a proposal to keep the project moving forward and provide some money. And that, in essence, is they'll provide up to $2 million for seven years for operational deficit in the operations of the museum. And then in addition, they will cover the cost in excess of $65 million to complete the project. And in order to start the process so we can further negotiate the agreement that's required with the state and the regu- that will be required with the Chickasaws, we prepared this joint resolution that has been executed by the Chickasaw Nation, and Francis has the copies presented. The form that went out in your packet on Friday was changed on Friday with further negotiations, and there were four changes made. In the last whereas clause on page five, or page one, we changed the word commit to agree. The Chickasaw Nation proposed that it would agree to provide a maximum of $2 million for the first seven years to cover operational expenses. On the second page, on the second whereas clause, there's a change of the word request to understands, and this has to do with the commercial development. As the consideration that the, in order for the Chickasaws to make this kind of cash contribution to the project, they would like to develop the commercial property, and that would be the commercial, that would be the consideration for their participation in the agreement. The third change is, in the now therefore clause, they've added the word substantially, that this resolution substantially contains the following general terms that was set forth in their letter of proposal they presented on December 22nd. And the last change is that the resolution is non-binding on either the parties, but it does clearly set forth the terms that we'll be working with.
Okay.
Mayor, if I can summarize this just a little bit further. When the subcommittee met of the council back in December, there were a couple of things we were looking at. We had some concerns about what's it going to take in capital cost to finish this project? How are we going to get it done? And we had a $9 million pledge the city had made a number of years ago. And if you recall, there was $40 million in private dollars donated. We were, we were part of that $9 million, and then the state had, in the legislation, put forth another $25 million. And that's a $65 million amount. And what the, we were concerned about what the amount would be, who is going to come up with that cash? Well, the, that issue is being resolved because the Chickasaws are saying, we're going to manage the project with the state, and anything beyond that, you won't have to be involved in that. So that's a big deal. Secondly, was the operations of this facility. The operations, based upon the study done by Consult Econ of, out of Massachusetts, said, had a high and a low and a medium range. But the medium range was about $2 million a year that they thought would be a, what the gap would be. And so the Chickasaws are stepping up and saying that we'll do the pre-opening expenses and for seven years, we'll contribute $2 million to do that. Now, we don't know exactly what it's going to cost, but that's the number that matches the report that we commissioned on the operations. This resolution says that further, beyond those seven years, we will work with the Chickasaws and try to develop, hopefully with some, maybe some money that could come off the development, maybe set aside an endowment for the facility, but we'll come up with a long-term plan to make sure the operation beyond the seven years is successful. That isn't all tied down at this point in time. We just don't have enough information to really do that. So we're working on some concepts in that area. And then the sundry development land would be turned to the Chickasaws for their development. And I'm here to say that I believe that but for the offer by the Chickasaws, we would not be talking about furthering this project at this point in time. And so it's a difficult project, we all know that, but this is a unique opportunity for us.
Comments or questions from council?
I have a little bit of concern about what the legislature has to do to make this work. Could you just point out exactly what's going to be required by the legislature to make this agreement as we've entered into it? What do they have to do besides agree to it, which is...
Well, Councilman, we did request that a time extension be given to us by the state of Oklahoma. And so I requested that back in December, and they have granted that now. So our new timeframe for concluding this is now March 15th of this year. And so with this framework, we will be working with the state and coming up with a, we're not sure if it'll be a single agreement with the state, a single agreement between the city and the Chickasaws, or whether it'll be a tripartite agreement between the state, the city, and the Chickasaws, to come up and tie down the details of the law that was passed by the state back in May. We do have a couple of areas that we're going to try to have that modified of the law. One of those has to do with the, with the commission that was formed out there. And secondly, about the revenue sharing or paying back revenues beyond a certain amount on the project. We're going to try to get those two provisions modified early in this legislative session.
I can't tell you how much I personally appreciate the Chickasaw's interest in this and willingness to step forward. I think the project was over had it not been for that. So I think that's, I personally appreciate, and I think all, everybody on the council that wants to see the project go forward appreciates it, because it just wouldn't be happening without that. That being said, it won't be successful in the future if we don't have 38 other tribes that are interested in it. I'd like some input in the next month or so from some of the other leaders of some of the other tribal organizations, nations, some governors, chiefs, whatever, as to what their feeling about this is. Because I think over the long run, that's going to be essential to making it run the way we'd like and be the kind of museum we'd like for it to be. I don't have any reason to think it won't be, but I just think it's so important to the future that we ought to have some input of some kind, either by letter or coming to see us, or us going to see them, or something that would flesh out that agreement so that we knew that we had the Poncas and Cheyenne all on the same page.
I understand that. I think that the intent of the museum was always to be a story museum of the Native American, whole American, Native American story in Oklahoma, which includes all the tribes, which have different stories, and it's still the intent to make that happen. And I have been represented, it's been represented to me by that the Chickasaws are also very interested in making sure that that happens.
I think that's true. I'd just like to see some outreach to those other entities, some feedback from them. I couldn't be happier, because I thought it was over that day we walked into that meeting. I thought it was over. And to see it still on the table is a really great thing for Oklahoma City, I think.
Ed?
Is there anything in the agreement, or do we have an understanding as to a base minimum in terms of standard? I mean, what type of museum we're talking about? Is this Smithsonian level? Is this something else?
It is. It is Ralph Applebaum who did the, is being involved, who did the Holocaust Museum in Washington. So I think he'd be very, very pleased with the quality of the, of the museum.
And there is an agreement in place between the Smithsonian and the Native American Cultural Authority that exists now to share Smithsonian artifacts with this museum.
Okay. So we're talking about a Smithsonian level of quality for this?
Yes, that's our understanding. And I believe Mr. Lance from the Chickasaw Nation Secretary of Commerce is supposed to be here today.
He wasn't able to make it. So he was in town, but he is not here this morning.
I'd just like to echo Pete's comments if I could. I mean, I served on that subcommittee. We received the reports from the consultants, and that information was fairly dire in terms of moving forward as the city alone, and I am extremely grateful to the Chickasaw Nation for their help. I think this project, you know, does have the opportunity to be the bookend on our beautiful river. It brings so much to Oklahoma City, and, you know, I look forward with a lot of anticipation to bringing this to fruition.
Larry?
End is in Ward 7.
Ed, there are a number of things that have to be fleshed out. This is not a final agreement. This is just saying we're going to move forward. To your point there, do we have a contractual agreement with the Smithsonian? The answer that I was given says there is an MOU between the AICCM and the National Museum of Native American Smithsonian Institution that extends through May of 2017. The MOU provides for object loans and exchanges, and further states that a separate agreement will be developed to outline the procedures for loans and exchanges. So there is something in place, but it has to be extended and solidified.
And that's it. Larry asked a number of questions last week, and we provided written responses to him. So that's what Larry's reading from.
All right, is there a motion to move this item forward?
Second.
All right, cast your votes on 9I. Passes unanimously. Item 9J, I understand we do not need executive session on this item, so a motion to approve the resolution would be in order? Okay, cast your votes on 9J. It passes unanimously. Item 9K is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9K? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on either of these items? All right, how about a motion on 10? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We're now on to items from council. James, you have anything for us today? All right, Ed? I know we have, we have one item here. I thought I'd make the round robin first. Larry?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Pete last Friday, Thursday evening, excuse me, at the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Banquet. Pete was selected as the outstanding citizen by that group, and I think we owe...
You want to give a speech now?
I gave the speech.
No, I'm going to save it for the next item. But it was, I was very humbled by it. It was the South Oklahoma City Citizen of the Year, and it's, I very much appreciated it. Very nice.
Very deserving. David's gone. Meg?
Just ditto to Pete. That was a really, really nice evening and a great recognition. Very well deserved.
And I'd like to echo those comments. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Pete.
All right, and we also have an item today that was introduced by Councilman Pettis and Stone Cypher. Today's the day for the public hearing, and this has been called the aggressive panhandling, but it has to do specifically with our efforts to try and, and keep our schoolchildren safe in northeast Oklahoma City. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on the item today as part of the public hearing? I know we have a few people that have signed up.
There is one thing I'd like to do, Your Honor, and that is, I asked Tom Jones of Rescue Mission to come and speak on this matter. I respect his views on homelessness issue, and I also respect his views on panhandling ordinance as he spoke to us in the past. He couldn't be here today. He's in Los Angeles. But he gave an interview and suggested that we might be able to play that, and I have Boyd here and ready to play that if that's all right at this time.
Okay.
Another round of debate over an Oklahoma City panhandling ordinance. A public hearing will be held Tuesday on an expanded law that would push solicitors farther away from a number of public places, and a prominent organization that helps the homeless is okay with that. News Channel 4's Lauren Fulton-Burk is live tonight with more. Lauren, this comes just months after a pretty heated battle over a different panhandling ordinance.
Yeah, that's right, Kristen. That ordinance made it illegal for anybody, not just panhandlers, to stand on most city medians, kind of like we are here tonight. This is one of those exceptions, though, because it's 30 feet wide. And in that debate, a number of organizations that help the homeless came together in opposition. They said it criminalized being poor. Well, now, a different organization that helps the homeless says that's not the case. You should see fewer signs and fewer souls standing on Oklahoma City medians these days asking for money, and that's just fine with one of Oklahoma City's largest homeless shelters.
I just feel like that if that's what they really want, that they don't have to stand out on the street and beg.
Tom Jones is the president and CEO of the City Rescue Mission, and last time this issue came up in September, he was in the minority.
Panhandling is an expression of free speech.
It's the game of whack-a-mole that we have played on homeless issues.
I'm just also greatly concerned about the continued and deep decriminalization of the poor in our city, and I believe that that's unacceptable, and that's not the direction that we should be moving in.
But now the city council is taking things a step further, wanting to push panhandlers 50 feet away from outdoor seating areas, ATMs, bus stops, restrooms, and schools. And once again, the City Rescue Mission is just fine with that.
Even if they are poor, they don't have to impose that on every other citizen in the community, because there are resources already available, free.
Jones knows that's at odds with the other organizations that help the homeless, but he says he's looking through the eyes of ordinary Oklahomans.
I don't think that they need to congregate in places where people have gone to take care of other sorts of business.
Those people, he says, have their own right to go about their day without being bothered. This ordinance is set for a public hearing on Tuesday. It could be approved the week after that, although, Kristen, several council members have already suggested some revisions to the ordinance as it stands now. Reporting live in northeast Oklahoma City, Lauren Fulton-Burk, News Channel 4.
All right, thanks, Lauren. We know you'll keep us updated.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And Meg, I know you were going to work on figuring out a way that the Curbside Chronicle would be minimally impacted if impacted at all.
Kenny, kindly, after our last meeting, drafted an amendment that could be presented for this that would roll back the distance from cafes and things that seems to have the biggest impact. I know some Curbside Chronicle folks are here to talk to us about the impact and have some suggestions, but that would be helpful. We also talked about changing the term unwanted to something a little clearer, like uninvited, that would make it a little bit more clear that you could certainly invite someone to come, offer you the Curbside Chronicle. We have also, Ronnie and Whitley are both here. We have met another time, we met last Friday. They've got some great ideas to bring forward a business plan that will sort of modify, not necessarily their satisfaction completely, but will help modify and try to explain to people the very significant difference between panhandling and those that are working to earn dollars, to take themselves out of the situation that they're in. So I hope to hear from them today.
And the issue we're addressing with this really arose from a Millwood School area where panhandlers are interacting with children, and children are, because they seem frightened, are crossing the street to avoid the interaction and putting themselves at danger, and the Millwood School system has asked for some help, and Councilman Pettis has been working with them. So it's a layered issue, and, you know, and it's hard to explain in a couple of sentences. But let's go through the citizens who have signed up to speak today, and I'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less if you can. Kristen Vales? Good morning, Kristen.
Good morning. Kristen Vales, 2228 Northwest 15th Street. I'll start out by saying while I no longer represent the Plaza District and its businesses, my experiences there have shaped my opinion on panhandling in Oklahoma City. When I was the director of the Plaza District, I had my share of dealing with panhandling issues on behalf of the businesses. These were usually truly aggressive panhandling issues, and together with the help of police, we were able to use the current ordinance to let aggressive panhandlers know that those activities would not be tolerated there. I understand council's intent is not to further negatively impact curbside. Their opportunities to sell in public place with this ordinance, but the proposed language, especially increasing from 20 feet to 50 feet, is going to push them even further. Curbside vendors need to be in the places where I spend my time most, public places with outdoor seating, bus stops, ATMs. These are the places where people gather, and these are the places where curbside vendors need to be. I'm opposed to creating citywide policy to address issues that are focused in a certain area. In the case of Millwood, has an officer been present to enforce the current aggressive panhandling ordinance? Will there be an officer present to enforce the proposed ordinance? If all avenues of enforcement have been considered, my request to council would be just expand the language around schools and not to expand it around the bus stops, ATMs, outdoor seating areas. Thank you.
So you're comfortable with 20 feet from a sidewalk cafe?
Yes, because that's what the current ordinance is. I think around the schools, that's nothing I can speak to, but being a former representative of a business area, expanding the 20 feet was plenty of room for us to enforce it when we needed to.
Thank you.
Ryan Kiesel?
Morning, Mayor, members of the council.
Morning.
I come here today representing the ACLU of Oklahoma, or first my address, 415 Northwest 34th Street. Representing the ACLU of Oklahoma, we remain opposed to these increased restrictions on panhandling in Oklahoma City. The ordinances that were passed December... panhandling in Oklahoma City, the ordinances that were passed December 8th, and then the current ordinances that the council is currently considering. I think that the city council needs to ask itself, each of you, and I would ask the members of the public as well that have concerns, and in particular, concerns around schools, where in the current ordinance are the deficiencies? Are police responding to instances of aggressive panhandling that's covered under current ordinance and saying that they don't have the tools that they need to intervene and protect the safety of the children going to and from school? And then, second, assuming that there are deficiencies in the current ordinance, which I haven't seen any evidence of there being any, is the current proposal the adequate remedy that the people of Oklahoma City need to protect their children? Is it the least restrictive means? And when I say least restrictive means, the least restrictive to our constitutional rights? Because we like to talk about Curbside Chronicle, and they're an incredibly important asset to the city of Oklahoma City, but it's more than Curbside Chronicle. Because when we're talking about restricting, we're talking about restricting the constitutional rights of all of the people of Oklahoma City, including, we just saw a reporter of Channel 4. I know that we all laughed and kind of giggled, but it wouldn't be so funny if he were arrested and he were cited under the current ordinance or any new proposed ordinances. So, again, the question is, and the question that everyone should be asking, there are members of the council, is, are the current ordinances inadequate? And if so, are these the appropriate remedies? At the ACLU of Oklahoma, without any evidence to the contrary, we believe the answer to both of those questions is no. Thank you.
Ryan Cass, do you...
That's Councilman.
Is there, if you have language like unwanted communication, or you can only engage on this if you're invited by another citizen, is there, is that specific enough, or are there problems with vagueness?
I think that's, you know, I think that that's a very good question. I think that unwanted, uninvited, both of those leave a lot of room for definitions. It's vague. If I myself were a person that we're soliciting, what is unwanted? What is uninvited? I think that we, there's a much clearer definition whenever we think about what aggressive is. I think that we can look at the current ordinance and understand what aggressive panhandling is, what it looks like, but unwanted and uninvited, I mean, the legislature is about to convene, and that's about a bunch of unwanted communication from my part, but we can't stop them from convening. It's about to happen. So, I mean, I think that there's a lot of vagueness and a lack of notice when we start talking about language like that. Thank you.
So, Rania O'Connor?
So, you would say that aggressive is more, is a better, I mean, it's more clear than uninvited is?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I would. Yeah.
Okay. Rania O'Connor?
Thank you.
My name is Rania O'Connor. I live at 1735 Northwest 12th Street, and I am the director of the Curbside Chronicle. I want to start by acknowledging the difficult job of a city councilperson. It is no easy task representing the various voices, ideologies, and desires of your constituents, and I am grateful for the concern from numerous councilpersons on how these proposed amendments will negatively affect the Curbside Chronicle. There has been a lot of discussion around the horseshoe as to how we can protect the Curbside Chronicle while continuing to pass laws that limit panhandling in Oklahoma City. Despite city council's well intentions to protect curbside, this objective is not possible. It is not possible to pass an anti-panhandling ordinance that is not also an anti-curbside ordinance, even though curbside vendors are not panhandling. Even if curbside is not the intended target, it is impossible for OKC to make restrictions to panhandling without also restricting and negatively affecting curbside and our ability to provide a positive alternative for individuals in need. I truly believe that city council and the Curbside Chronicles share the same goal of reducing panhandling in Oklahoma City. We just differ in opinion on the appropriate approach to the issue. The Curbside Chronicle was created as a direct response to panhandling in OKC. Panhandlers and people in the situation of homelessness face many barriers to traditional employment. Street papers provide an opportunity for these individuals to earn income in a more empowering way, transitioning them from panhandlers to salesmen, and then from salesmen on to further opportunities. At Curbside, we believe in meeting people where they are and working alongside them to overcome individual barriers. We are not the solution to panhandling, but we are part of an ongoing effort to find a solution and to provide real life-changing opportunities for people in poverty. Unfortunately, these ordinances may cripple us to a point where we can no longer fulfill our missions and cease to exist. I do not believe that criminalizing panhandling does anything to reduce panhandling in our city. I do not see how ticketing and jailing panhandlers does anything to change their lives for the better, but I do know that the Curbside Chronicle has reduced the number of panhandlers in OKC, helping many end their homelessness. Curbside is working. We have a lot more to accomplish in OKC, but I believe our program is already doing far more to end panhandling than any anti-panhandling ordinance ever could, and we are accomplishing this success not by demonizing and punishing panhandlers, but by showing them compassion and understanding for their circumstances and offering them a better way. Curbside is already suffering from the median ordinance that was passed in December. We have seen a drop in sales in this issue due to the fact that many of our vendors are still trying to find places to sell around Oklahoma City. Eighty percent of curbside vendors relied on sales from medians prior to that ordinance passing, and we are having to combat yet another restrictive ordinance that takes away our ability to move forward from the December ordinance. Furthermore, some police officers do not understand the median ordinance well enough to enforce it properly. Since January, we've already had four instances where police officers have kicked curbside vendors off the sides of the streets. These vendors were not illegally standing on medians but on the sides of the road where council suggested that vendors move. However, police officers have told vendors everything from it is now illegal to panhandle in OKC, to vendors need to get permits to panhandle, to vendors can stand on the side of the roads but need to be 200 feet away from intersections, to it is illegal to stand and panhandle on the sides of the roads. For fear of being ticketed, our vendors have obliged and moved away from these legal vending locations, but it is impossible to express the feeling of defeat that vendors are feeling right now and the loss of hope. If passed, this additional ordinance will significantly reduce the remaining legal spots where vendors can sell in downtown OKC, Bricktown Plaza, and other areas of high-foot traffic. There are outdoor seating areas, ATMs, and public bus stops all over these pedestrian-friendly zones. If passed, this additional ordinance could effectively end curbside, and I truly believe this is something that neither of us want to happen in Oklahoma City. I do not believe that city council truly intends and wants to criminalize poverty. I don't know if city council fully understands the effects of these ordinances on people in poverty, but I'm asking you to take a different approach this time. We can't undo the damage of the December ordinance, but we can try to save what's left of curbside and have us thrive in the future. Because I realize that despite my efforts, the future of curbside is not in my hands. The future of curbside is in your hands, and the decisions you make today determine our tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Can you talk about Millwood? I mean, just what you've seen out there?
Yes. My husband, Whitley O'Connor, was going to discuss more. We did go to Millwood to try and take some measurements and see how this new proposed, these new proposed amendments would affect that area. So, he will be commenting more on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Whitley O'Connor?
My name is Whitley O'Connor. I live at 1735 Northwest 12th Street. As Ronnie said, I'm going to discuss what we found when we went to measure at Millwood on Sunday. You know, what we did when we first got there is we identified the possible panhandling locations. There were 10 of them. Eight were sides of the road, the corners. Two of them were in medians. What I found was that every single location was more than 50 feet from the school, so I quickly moved on to the bus stop and found that every single location was more than 50 feet from a bus stop. So, effectively, just to be clear, of the 10 possible panhandling locations, zero will be limited by the proposed language. Not a single one falls within the 50-foot restriction being proposed today. Beyond that, I just want to address, you know, the underlying problem that we're discussing is that children feel scared or harassed by panhandlers, and that's really what we're trying to solve. If that is our true intent, then I believe that our current language is fully sufficient in addressing that. To speak to Councilman Griner's question about aggressive being defined, it is defined. We have a definition that includes touching, following, asking multiple times, soliciting after dark, things of this nature. All of these things can be actively utilized if our children are in fact being harassed, and if this is a problem in the future, it can definitely be addressed and overcome in that manner. If the intent of the proposed ordinance is to remove panhandlers from the Millwood area, as I have discussed, is completely ineffective in doing so unless unconstitutionally and unlawfully enforced, which I assume the ACLU would be happy to discuss with all of you. If, however, the intent is to ensure our schoolchildren aren't harassed, I believe our current language is fully sufficient, and I believe there are other opportunities that we can work on that would sufficiently address the safety of our schoolchildren, which I think we're all in agreement. That's something we're all interested in. We want our schoolchildren to be able to get to and from school safely. To me, I think there's some problems we could actively work on. The big problem I see when I was there is that, you know, the bus stops are across highway entrance and exit ramps. To get to school, the children are having to go under an overpass, they're crossing multiple high-traffic roads. That's scary as a child. I assume I would be more scared of that than the man in the median, you know, calmly asking for money. And so, you know, maybe we could address something like moving the bus stop. Maybe, as has been discussed, we could send an officer out there to make sure that these panhandlers aren't being aggressive. There are other manners in which are currently in the law that we could address that are positive and effective in actually solving the problem we have at hand. Finally, on Sunday, I actually talked to a panhandler who was there. He was on the corner, he was on the median, northeast 63rd and MLK. His name is Mike. Mike panhandles there on a daily basis. I assume this is a man, as discussed at the previous meeting, who is the regular. He's the one who's there every day. Mike was completely unaware that this was even a problem in the area. He says he hasn't talked to children...
I'm sorry. That's so not true, because on multiple times, the police department, along with the sheriff's department, have had many discussions with Mike Sunday. Mike had on a red pair of jeans. I'm very familiar with Mike, and Mike also has a long criminal record.
Okay. Well, according to Mike, that was the case. He is a very small, soft-spoken, timid man. I felt no fear for him being around him. He was all five foot five, maybe 115, soaking wet. But my question is why we're not using these other manners to address this? Why homeless advocates have not been asked to go and talk to Mike? Why we're not trying to be constructive and supporting Mike and getting him out of the situation so he doesn't have to be there any longer? Instead, we're looking to impose and expand on ordinance that's citywide, that doesn't just address Millwood, but addresses the entire city, then imposes a $200 fine plus court fees and up to 30 days in jail. To repeat, the reason why I was on the side on Sunday was to talk about restorative justice and how fines and fees are such a big problem, our reform of the criminal justice system. And so, that's very concerning that to address one area, we're going to pass a citywide ordinance that, as I have stated, is completely ineffective of solving the problem at hand.
And your reference to Mike, those, the things that you said about Mike, it's not true. I've had multiple conversations with Mike, and Mike is an individual who does not want to help himself, because I have personally tried. So, for you to make the argument that nobody has tried to reach out to Mike, I'm just going to tell you it's not accurate, because myself, I have tried. Mike does not want to help himself.
Jonathan Roberts?
Thank you for your time this morning. I'm the executive director for Be The Change. We are a nonprofit that provides street outreach services, and we've done that for the past five years. I'm just really frustrated today, just really, really frustrated, because we have people in our community that are in need, and our response to that is to criminalize them. We have people that don't have enough food to eat, they don't have access to medical care, they don't have a place to sleep, and we continue, this body, what we're doing is we're criminalizing their behavior, and I think we're moving them farther away from the services that they need. As I said, we've been doing street outreach for the past five years, and I assure you there are no roving bands of homeless people coming to Oklahoma City to take advantage of our generosity here. I think that's a myth. The people that we come in contact with every day are people from Oklahoma City. They're Oklahomans. They're our neighbors. They're people that live in need, whose basic needs are not being met by the services that are available right now. Our job is to connect them to those services, and I think that further criminalizing them, when we impose these ordinances on folks that, whose access already is sort of limited to the services that they need, that we're not doing anybody any services. People don't panhandle because they have a lot of free time on their hands. People panhandle because they have needs that are not being met. They panhandle, again, because they don't have enough food to eat, they don't have access to the services that they need. And I think when we look at, you know, no one's getting rich off of that. We have a couple of really amazing things that we're doing, and one of those is the Curbside Chronicle. It's just really frustrating. It's frustrating when we work with people every single day that are now off the streets and in housing. They have meaningful activities that they're engaged in every day because of the efforts of the Curbside Chronicle. I just implore you today that we not continue this, that we not continue to criminalize and vilify people that live in poverty in our community. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thanks.
Jonathan, can I just make a comment? I'm incredibly grateful for the work that Be The Change does, and you know that the city council, through our general fund, funds a lot of the work that you're doing, and it is great work, and I know that there are things in with the works with the Homeless Alliance that will amplify the work that you're doing. But, you know, I, again, kind of want to bring this back to saying, I think this conversation about criminalizing poverty has gotten the discussion that we started a long time ago way off track. The goal of this council was to help try to find a way to redirect the dollars that are going out windows to exactly the people you're talking about, which is yourself and everybody else. If we can get those dollars back to the agencies that are doing the work, that provide the food and provide the shelter, that has been the goal of this conversation from December to today. And we get lost somehow in this conversation that we're trying to create a city and an environment that is, doesn't recognize people in need, and that is not the case. And I think I speak for everybody around this horseshoe, that that is not our goal here. We are trying to help the folks with it.
I appreciate those comments, and I have great respect for you and the rest of the council. I think what it comes down to, and I've heard this before, is that we're embarrassed about people. I've heard that when we have visitors to our city, that we're embarrassed by having folks on the corner begging for money. What we should be embarrassed about is that we have people in need in our community, and this is our only avenue. This is the only thing that, this is what we've opted to do, is to criminalize that behavior, to vilify these folks that are flying a sign on corners because their basic needs are not being met.
And I disagree with you about that sentiment. I don't think people are embarrassed. What is unfortunate is that we are in a situation where people feel like they have to do that instead of accessing the services that currently exist, including your own. And anyway, there's a lot of things...
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I will say, again, in five years, we do street outreach every single day. We're on the streets. We have teams that go across Oklahoma City. You've probably seen our big gaudy van doing outreach, providing food. We partner with Regional Food Bank and some other organizations to take food to those locations where folks are panhandling or where folks are living in poverty and where folks are camping that are homeless, to engage them in services. That's the model. We have 15 partner agencies that join us in doing that, and we do appreciate the funding. We appreciate the resources, but it's a very small amount of money that we receive to do a whole lot of work, to engage these folks. I just don't think that this is the answer. I don't think that continuing to vilify these folks is the answer to the problem.
And I just would like to point out that your city of Oklahoma City is doing that same work side by side with you, with our hot teams. Every one of their cars have MREs available for food. They bring food. They have blankets. Our officers stop and ask every person with a sign, "Are you hungry?"
Absolutely, and they're a great partner in this effort, and we appreciate that.
They are. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kim Woods?
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name's Kim Woods. I live at 1421 Northwest 19th. I live in Ward 6, and I'm the deputy director of the Homeless Alliance. I honestly don't think there's anything that I can say to persuade you not to pass this ordinance. You all know where the Homeless Alliance stands. Fines and fees that are specifically targeted to a disadvantaged population will only make it harder for them to escape the cycle of poverty. As a parent of a young child, I understand where you're coming from with this ordinance, but I still have major concerns about the other prohibited areas and the other language that you're clumping in with it. We're already hearing about the last panhandling ordinance that you just passed being enforced improperly. I'm extremely concerned how any unwanted communication will be enforced. Panhandling ordinance do not... Panhandling ordinance do not solve the issue of why people panhandle, it only pushes the problem elsewhere. Also, I would like to say, please don't believe everything that you see on TV. Immediate shelter and services are not necessarily immediately available. And then also, this Thursday is the annual point in time count. City of Oklahoma City's continuum of care staff, the Oklahoma City Police Department Homeless Outreach Team, numerous service agencies and volunteers will be going out at 4:00 a.m. to camps to survey homeless individuals and some of those who panhandle. And I would personally like to invite any of you to join us, to go out and meet some of your constituents that do not have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Harrison?
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Chris Harrison, 1425 Northeast 48th Street, in Oklahoma City Ward 7. Currently, the president of Millwood School Board of Education. This is our third time coming before you. Simply, Dr. King was quoted as saying that the purpose of law is to establish order. The purpose of the proposed panhandling ordinance is not about what has occurred, but what possibly could occur. It's about us being more reactive, being proactive versus being reactive at this point. It does not unjustly prohibit someone, but primarily seeks to curtail an issue that has the potential to impose undue stress on children simply just going to school. We at the Millwood School Board definitely appreciate what you all have done so far with the ordinance. I would like to add, we do have a clear understanding. Our superintendent has stated this as well, about the 50 feet that we're proposing today. It began at 1,000, and made its way to 100 and now at 50. So as we move forward with this situation, we do support the ordinance at this point in time, and we do support the growth of our community. But at this point in time, it's not necessarily about what we feel about the homeless and disenfranchised, but more importantly, where Millwood students are concerned and other students around Oklahoma City. We've been elected to make sure that they are safe and have a safe environment when going to school, and that was our number one intention as far as being here. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Brady Henderson?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brady Henderson. I'm at 419 Northwest 20th Street, and I want to say a few words, and I'm happy to answer if there are other specific questions, I can to the best of my ability, to echo some of the comments made by folks like Mr. Kiesel, by the folks at Curbside Chronicle. I'm concerned that we may ultimately place ourselves in a position of a false choice, where we feel that we have to either protect our children or protect the Constitution. I'm here to tell you, the founders of our country were smarter than that. They didn't make us choose between those two things. The questions that were presented by Mr. Kiesel are the same ones I would present. And my concern here is really this. It's not a matter of, do we protect our kids? Do we try to make sure they can go to school safely at Millwood? It's a matter of whether we use our existing authority or whether, as a government, as a city, we have to demand more authority from the populace. That is precisely the concern here. Everything that I have heard in terms of the actual concerns here, the safety issues, all of it is illegal under current law. All of it is addressable under current law, if that law is enforced. My concern is, if we are demanding more authority rather than actually enforcing the law that we have, that puts us in a very terrible position if a matter does go to court later. But perhaps more importantly, as a constitutional lawyer, I ask the questions having to do with the Constitution. But if I'm the parent over at Millwood, I'm going to ask a simpler question. I'm going to ask, is my kid safe? Here's the problem. If we demand more authority under this implied promise that this will solve the problem, and in fact, it really gives us nothing new to do that, our existing laws already do that, then my child is made no safer. That's the fundamental problem here. We don't have to choose between those two things. What we do have to do is do exactly what our current ordinance allows. Focus on the conduct, not the speech, not the presence of panhandlers, but the conduct if and when a panhandler does something that is aggressive, and that is a very well-defined term. Intimidating somebody physically, following them, doing it at night, doing it in ways that make someone fear for their safety, obstructing somebody, that's a very, very big one. All of that is illegal. I'd simply urge this council, make sure that we're enforcing our current laws before we demand more law, more government power. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Brady. Clayton Baer?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Clayton Baer, 917 Northwest 34th. I don't have facts and figures, that's their job, so I just have a couple anecdotal things. I've been involved with homelessness now with Mr. Jones, City Rescue, and with the Homeless Alliance, bringing them dinners and things from chefs around the city and organizing those efforts, sort of provide a better meal for them and extending hospitality. I'm in the restaurant business. I got, the catalyst for me came years after doing this, and I did the point in time count, which they're getting ready to do, I think Thursday. And that's where we go out to the camps at 4:00 in the morning and interview the folks living in these camps and these tents and talk to them. And we have a questionnaire that we ask them questions on, why they're there, how they got there, what medical conditions they have. All of this is to determine risk factors and, you know, what they're, if we can help them and get them out of there as soon as possible. The main, one of the main questions is how they acquire funds. We talked, I was here for the last meeting, I couldn't talk, how they acquire funds and the means by which they go to do that. Panhandling was probably number one, not from the people there. These obstacles to get out of there. Jonathan Roberts, I've served on his board and was very proud of him, he interjected himself into that situation to try to find out what sort of obstacles are in place in our city right now to getting out of that situation, and there's a lot. So I guess my challenge to you is, is they will provide you with a member of the hot team who have interactions with these folks day in and day out, and to go out there with us at 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, and interview these guys and talk to them, and talking to them, they're people. And they have issues. They have mental issues, they have health issues that keep them from getting out of the situation that they're in. It's a very eye-opening experience, it's very eye-opening for me. It has changed the way that I see our city completely. When I drive down the street, it changes the way you look at the city. It actually just changes the way you see the city. So it's really important. And then one more thing, I was talking to a business leader the other day about this particular issue and the previous issue in December, and he was unaware of the Curbside Chronicle. He was unaware of what the work they do is. And I feel that that's your constituents that you're answering to are simply just unaware of that there's already something in place, helping people get off the street. And the Curbside Chronicle's done amazing, amazing work in doing that. And just simple education. All I had to do is explain to him what curbside was, and he's like, "Oh, well, I'll give money to those guys, I just won't give it to the other ones." You know, that was just, it was just that simple shift of just that little tiny bit of education completely changed his entire mentality. Now he, you know, nobody wants to put those guys out of business. So that's my feeling. And she's right, she's right. There was a police officer, I talked to one of the police officers the other day, who told some, standing on the side of the street where it's legal, and was told that he can't do that. And he's not going to argue with the police officers, he doesn't want to go to jail. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Clayton, if I could just, one or two things, I certainly appreciate all your comment, personal comment on Facebook about this last episode in December. But that being said, I want you to know, and you probably know, talking to Whitley and Rania, that we are working on a series of campaigns to make the Curbside Chronicle more visible to people in this community. You know, one of the things that I think is really so wonderful about it is the branding with the green vests, and we're working on developing a series of campaigns. Cox is already on board to help us. We're going to do so on Channel 20. I would agree with you that I haven't met one person that would like the Curbside Chronicle to go out of business, and it's my mission. Rania, I wasn't happy about the words that it's not possible to do this because I committed to them last Friday, that we were going to try to make Oklahoma City a model city for one that can have an ordinance to try to protect people's safety and simultaneously have the most successful street paper in the country.
Well, I know cities where the city council has gotten behind their street paper. They have essentially ended panhandling, just through the education process, just by educating the citizens about not to give to the folks out there and to give to the guys in the green vest, or whatever, you know, avenue it is that they choose to do that, so.
Well, that's exactly what we've tried to do, but we've been accused of criminalizing poverty, so.
All right, that wraps up the list of people that have signed up to speak. We thank everybody. Do we need a motion to vote on this, to move it forward? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and then the final hearing is scheduled for two weeks from today on February 9.
So Francis, how do we handle the amendment piece of this? Do we do that now, or do we do that?
No, I would put that on next time.
That would be on next time?
Yeah, and I'll talk to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I just ask a question of staff, maybe, or John, or, I mean, so one, one point that was made was that there's 10 sites where it would still be legal to panhandle around Millwood and that this wouldn't, wouldn't really.
I heard you say that. He also said he measured from the building.
I mean, those are the, on MLK.
I don't know where the land is. Like, the Millwood people said they started with 1,000, we did 50.
Right.
It's from the land boundaries, it's not from the buildings, so I would refer to them where the 50 feet would start.
Well, it's 50 feet from the bus stop and...
From the building, from the land.
The land of the school.
Yes.
Okay, so do you want to say something?
The 50 feet, like you said, he's right. It would be 50 feet from any bus stop, but what he left out was, the kids have to walk by that 50 feet in order to get to school in all of those cases. So all of those bus stops, even the one on the south side, if you stand on that corner, it's 50 feet, but to cross safely, the kids have to come right next to the panhandler. On the north side, and then the one on the northwest, or southwest side as well. So even though those bus stops, this ordinance would allow them to still stay in there, the kids still have to pass by them. There's no way around that to get to school.
Would there be utility in moving the bus stop as he suggested?
I asked for that too. That was, I think, my first request, is like, can we move? There are three different bus stops there, and so I don't know in regards to, I think it had to do with city land and where they were located or something to that respect. But there are three bus stops that my kids frequent. I don't know how that would be possible.
And there's now some sidewalks, thanks to Maps 3, we now have some sidewalks, so this gives better protection.
Where would you suggest moving the bus stops to?
I don't know. I just ask the possibility because I'm not, I don't have any idea where we could legally move them, but even if we move them on the south, the north side of the street where the new sidewalks are, that would severely limit the amount of traffic or panhandlers that my kids would have to walk by if they were on the north side of the highway.
And that's something that we have talked with Jason, we will have further discussions. How can we move the bus stops and still keep the timeframe for the buses? So that's something.
And I think that was what they told me, it would throw off the timeframe, and then it would move the bus stop from the location that is near City County Health.
Yeah.
Because that was the other reason, so we share that. But the other point I wanted to make is if someone came out on Sunday and looked at the traffic, then you don't see my kids having to walk through it. So I think in order to see it, you have to be there at 7:15 in the morning when my kids are getting off that bus stop and walking through, because it starts that early. And then in the afternoon, where you see the kids who missed the bus or walk home with their siblings or walk to McDonald's or whatever, you'll see the traffic that goes through all the places that panhandling could occur.
All right. Thanks.
Logistically, is it, would it be possible to vote separately on the school issue and, as was suggested by someone, the school issue and the other ones, the cafes and all that separately? Can you divide them into two different?
Yes, absolutely.
I think one of the things that Mr. Jordan was talking about next time was putting it back to the 20 feet, so it wouldn't be, you wouldn't have to vote separately. I think that we've proposed it on 50 feet because we understood that people would not object to it. I think with the objection, I think we're going to put it back to 20 feet unless somebody objects, and that way, it'll be back to where it was.
20 feet is where the current ordinance...
20, it's 20 feet from restaurants, but we, the amendment will still be 50 feet from bus stops, ATMs, and so forth, but just 20 feet from restaurants.
Just cafe stops and, I mean, cafes and restaurants?
Correct.
Okay. Are we talking about changing the language to uninvited or unwanted?
That was the amendment that Kenny's drawn up so far, if that's helpful.
Okay.
Pete, do you want to say something?
The purpose of the public hearing is to get this kind of feedback so that if we've heard additional things that we can incorporate into an amendment for the next time it's introduced, that's what we want to try to do, so, delighted we heard a lot today.
I mean, in terms of getting feedback, it's, I just don't want to be like the legislature where we're just passing things and ending up in court. I mean, the ACLU has publicly given their intent that they're going to sue on the first ordinance that we just passed. It seems like we should let the courts opine first before we throw gas on the fire. I mean, shouldn't we see how that lawsuit washes out first, get that feedback, and then tailor our ordinance?
I disagree, and again, this is, from my eyes, this is a safety issue. And so, we have, I believe, great attorneys who can handle, if ACLU wishes to file a lawsuit against the city more than like they probably will, I think we have great attorneys who will advocate hard for us in court, but again, this is a safety issue. If you see what I have to see every single day around Millwood where parents and students have to face, you will see. You know, they mentioned a story about Mike. I see Mike almost 50 million times a day. I know Mike's schedule better than anybody. When it's time for Mike to go use the restroom, he walks up to McDonald's and use the restroom. When it's time for Mike to use the telephone call, to use the telephone, he walks to Sonics for somebody to pick him up, to take him. Then on 63rd Street, where he stays in this little motel on 63rd. I got Mike's schedule down pat because I have done every single thing I can to possibly help Mike. And for people to say this is criminalizing the poor, that's not what we're doing. We're trying to keep students safe, and Mike is one of the panhandlers that have a long criminal record. You wouldn't want Mike close to your kids or your school. And so, again, this is a safety issue, and I do hear the concern about ACLU suing, you know, people threaten to sue the city all the time, and so that should not stop us from doing what is right.
And if it was maybe just about the schools, maybe it would just be a safety issue. But again, this goes beyond schools, we're talking about cafes, restaurants, we're talking about, imagine the situation where you have a wealthy patron of a restaurant, somebody comes over, the police say, "You can't panhandle here," and the person says, "I summoned them. I invited them to come over." I mean, it's just, it was wanted communication. "I summon thee to come over and give me a curbside..." It's just, it just sounds horrible. And it's open, certainly, to litigation. And so, I think it goes, that's why, at a minimum, I'd like to vote on these things separately, to kind of narrow down what you're talking about, about the schools, and then kind of focus on the other things separately.
All right. Pete, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm sure no one's going to be surprised that I'm opposed to this, but, you know, a couple of weeks ago, in a little email that I send out to 100 people or so, I put a comment in it that said that perhaps the best thing to do would just be to bar poor people, mentally ill people, addicted people from Oklahoma City, maybe, just a 50-foot circle around Oklahoma City. And I said that as a joke, but it's not a joke. That's exactly what we're doing. The idea that this is about safety only came up after it was discovered, which I didn't think it was that great a discovery, that you can't limit speech. Then it became a safety issue. All the safety stuff came up, whole new. And then fortunately for those that oppose panhandling, some poor guy who was a panhandler, although he wasn't panhandling at the time, he was jaywalking at the time, happens to get killed, so he becomes a poster child for safety. It's not about safety. It's about, it's about, let's put this problem where we can't see it. Let's hide it. I... I, I, I look at the preacher talking about it. He and I have an absolute 180-degree difference with regard to what causes this problem. It's a different, it's a different mindset. If it's caused by addiction or mental illness, the idea that this Mike guy won't respond to you is not relevant. If the guy's mentally ill or if he's addicted, it's not, we're, we're just not treating the problem that really exists out there. But I, I think we ought to seriously think about just building a wall around Oklahoma City and just saying, if you're poor, you can't come because we don't want to look at you. If you're addicted, you can't come because we, because we're cutting mental health services in Oklahoma to the point where we can't help the addicted. We can't help these people. The state's backing away from every opportunity they can to help the mentally ill, to help the addicted. So what we're going to do, because that, that problem's going to continue to grow, we're just saying you can't, we don't want to look at them. Let's go hide them someplace. Maybe we could build hedges and say you couldn't be, you have to stay behind the hedge if you're mentally ill. I, I'm just, I, I passed out something that my friend and former Councilman Sam Bowman gave me this week that has to do with any experience that he had. He randomly talked to a lady who panhandles. And it, it kind of flies in the face of the idea that we've got services for everybody. This is a lady that apparently tried all that stuff and it didn't work. Didn't work for her. She couldn't get in the YWCA facility because the guy that beat her up previously quit beating her up, so she couldn't stay there. She couldn't stay in the preacher Tom's facility because she felt unsafe there. She felt safer on the street than she did as a single elderly woman in one of those facilities. I just think the approach is totally wrong. I think about the energy, the time that we've spent trying to deal with this. If this much time, this much energy, this much manpower had been spent on trying to do something about mental, just mental illness alone, leave the addiction, of course, addiction to, in large measure, is, is a mental illness, but I, I just think this is the wrong approach. I think the idea that if you can't see them, well, those people are not such a problem. Well, they are a problem. They deserve, they deserve better. You can say we're not criminalizing it. As the chairman of the Judiciary Committee that has oversight over our court system, we have tried to avoid jailing people for, that don't have the ability to pay the fine. We've made serious efforts to do that. Now, as soon as, is that going to work in this case? If a guy's mentally ill and he's a panhandler and he gets a ticket and he finds, he goes to court and he's mentally, he finds out he's impoverished and doesn't have the money to pay and is released, what's he going to do? Probably going to go back out and panhandle again. I, I just, I just think it's the wrong approach. I think you have to, if you're approaching it like every one of these people have a, make a conscious choice in the same manner that you make a conscious choice to come to work every day, you're, you're missing the vote because they're not, that's not how their minds work, that's not the situation they find themselves in. You can say, well, that's tough, but I think that's what this ordinance says, that's tough. I think we ought to put our money in building hedges, frankly.
Pete, if I could just comment about the work that's being done. You know that Mental Health Association is now a statewide organization.
We can pat ourselves on the back forever about the work that's been done.
The work that's being done going forward.
And is being done. And you can't, you can't talk to me about my, my lack of commitment to that. I mean, I've been there every time, every time a check had to be written, I was ready to go every time. I do it in my, I do it personally. But until the problem, until we, until we as a, as a community realize that problem is more important than criminalizing it, it's not going to be solved.
That was just one.
And that's just a difference of opinion. I disagree with you, but that's just a difference in the way I look at it. It's a, it's a left-right kind of thing. There are people that think that somebody that sets out on the street corner and is mentally ill has the ability to say to not do that. The fact is, he does have the ability to not do that. But as long as he's mentally ill, he doesn't have the treatment for mental, for the mental illness, he's not capable of doing it. It's like an addict. It's like, it's like people that say, you ought to quit drinking. If you want to quit drinking bad enough, you would. Well, that's possible to do that, but it takes help to do that. It's not something that just happens just like that. Anybody around this horseshoe that's quit smoking cigarettes probably wouldn't know that. It's not that easy to do. And as long as we put our emphasis on the punishment, degradation side of it, I think we're mistaken. I think we're, we're wasting our time. But that's.
I just wanted to point out, the work that the United Way is doing just approved a million two in grants for the specific focus on mental health in this community and providing wraparound services to people that were trying to get into housing. There is big work being done in the area of mental health and substance abuse treatment that hasn't been there before.
I'd be the last one to say there was no work being done. I'm, I'm just saying.
I just want to, Pete, can I just say that that one million, Medicaid is going to drop every private mental health provider. They're no longer going to pay for mental health services. I mean, Medicaid is broke, we won't take the federal expansion, the money that's available to us. It's a moral, immoral decision in my opinion. The, the private sector cannot make up for the loss in, in your Medicaid services. The services are not there in terms of mental health. They're not, certainly not there in terms of addiction. We're a greater metro area without a long-term facility for addiction. Medicaid, to, to say that you're going to carte blanche, cut out every Medicaid dollar for private mental health care is going to outweigh that United Way. It's, it's going, we're going to be swamped in this problem. So if we want to treat the symptom, I mean, if we could just make any kind of statement to the legislature that, hey, this is a problem for us as a city. Can you rethink the fact that you're broke and look for other solutions because it's overwhelming us as a city? And we're debating amongst ourselves about how to treat with all the mentally ill on our streets and the addicted on our streets and the poor on our streets, but can we have some kind of counterstatement to the legislature about the cause of this? And the cause, as Pete is alluding to, is the lack of services in the city.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table for item 11A. Ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Motion passes eight, one. Seven, two. You want, let's vote again so everybody can be properly recorded. Seven, two. All right, city manager reports, claims and payroll?
Nothing this morning.
All right. Citizens to be heard, Joe Sarge Nelson.
I'm Joe Sarge Nelson. And what's been passed out, I'm talking about the page on the front, the second's what we need, and the third one is about the fools I'm going to be talking about. And I'm glad Mr. Jordan is here. Since he is the legal representative of the city, I'm afraid somebody's going to need his help. Maybe me. Well, I promised I wouldn't start trouble unless it came my way. Well, it did. And come my way, that is. I'm looking at this from publication that you're looking at at the present time, Aldi Oklahoman, by a very esteemed man that wrote it, William Crum. And he tells it the way it's given to him, and you have to admire that. But it's on current issues that's full of troubles, some worse now more than you'll ever know, and maybe some you already do know. It's safe to assume that Thursday's, October 29th this year in 2015 was a landmark day for City Hall outside also, I guess. But the MAPS streetcar contract was thrown into the so-called crapper. Lack of a better word. Now, reading this article this year, I read it real carefully, had some delicate points to address to all of you leaders of this city that forgot to handle this particular item properly. Now, the company that signed the contract with, I'm not even going to read it on her because it's so foolish, I can know it by heart. When the car, this city signed that contract, according to this article, why did you sign a contract for all those millions of taxpayers' dollars and not even check the credentials of the people who was doing the job? And what's even worse, that very company has kept their commitment with Dallas and Detroit on more cars than we bought. And they paid for them. And they got them on time. In fact, Dallas has got their second set on time. It'll be here this summer. The first year are already in operation, on time and on schedule. Oklahoma City has got 600,000 people. We do not, I'll repeat it, do not need a streetcar. We can't afford a streetcar. We barely can board a bus system accordingly. Now, the money that we're throwing away, and I look down here on this one deal down here, it says, one of my third questions, it says 128 million for the streetcar? Unless my memory fails me, it's that I thought it was voted on, at least the three mayors of the city sure sold us the idea on it, including yourself. As well as Mr. Brestick told the taxpayers, the cost was around $95 million. And if unless my, your amount is slightly appears to be bin a little bit, that's 33 million over the 128,000, uh, million you were talking about. And since all that started, it escalated up to over 300 million. Now, you don't need to sit down and put a pencil on this. I spent months looking at this thing. I even told you the Zeta Route was a joke. It was a joke, it was intended to be a joke. I'm not even going to go to all this other stuff, I'll just go straight to the point. It was a planned joke, just like the convention center. Fred Jones Morgan Building over there wasn't going to be a hotel, it was a joke to start with. Nine months of negotiations, got some high-powered people supposed to be working for this city, yet we're going outside to get people? What's wrong with our own architects? What's wrong with our own engineers? They're not fools, we pay them a good job and good salary. They ought to be doing their job. And I'm getting really cranked up about this thing. I have to admire what you said a while ago about the people out in this deal. I've had people, and I've built two longer mats in this town, one on Southwest 44th and Penn, one right there at Northwest 39th and Portland. I asked a gentleman to come over and work for me. He said, why? I make more money in one day than you do in a month, just doing, standing out there. Most of them do. Now, there are some that are legitimate. I will not knock that issue, there are some. But I pick and choose the ones I think that are legitimate. Usually they have crutches, they've got a leg gone, they have some reason for being there. And I admire the program. We've got programs out there, but we're not getting anywhere unless y'all start pulling together. I know the city rescue mission was on this program here, but we've got them all over Oklahoma City. Now, my other problem is that streetcar and that convention center, it's now a joke. The Zeta Route's being dropped, being redone somewhere else. The convention center that was supposed to be picked up over here is now going, isn't it strange that everything's going right at Southwest 5th and 6th and 7th? Well, I have to know for a fact that some of you people own that property up there and sold it to Oklahoma City because you knew that's where it was going because that's precisely where both of those projects are going. I'm getting a little upset with this. I went to law school too. I just don't choose to be a lawyer. My hands are tied, but I'd rather be an investigator because I'm damn good at it. And Mr. Jordan there will tell you, you know the difference between without prejudice and with prejudice, one you can file something, the other one you can't. That's after your case is in court. And I like to think I know that. But anyway, I suggest that the council on that third deal, get ahold of your people and find out what's going on because I'm going to come back and find out. I do know that Article 2 has been violated in two areas, and I'll be next, next week to find out on the last statement I made. I want to know why people that work for this city is buying and selling property to Oklahoma City and making an ungodly profit and nothing's being done about it. I know there's rules about that sort of thing. One's called fraud, and I know bribery's going on because I got that documented, I ain't worried about that part. But I'm telling you straight up, I don't play. And I promised I wouldn't get ruined unless it came my way, and it did.
Thanks for coming down. And that's it. We're going to adjourn. We're adjourned.